Call the meeting to order six thirty. It's just gonna be a select board members tonight, no town manager. Let me pull up the agenda. So, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any alterations that need to be made?
Yeah. I had seen something that said we were doing, and now it's not on this thing here. Linda said she was gonna be sending out more emails on the financials, but it's all for this year, so that's good. There's no financials on here?
What are you looking at?
Well, I saw an email from Friday afternoon saying, "Here is your..." I don't see it here now.
Okay.
Saw that there. We're gonna have an FY twenty-six budget review without a town manager here?
He's not here now. If you want to go over what you did.
Well, actually, I went over this with Dave earlier, so Dave and I coordinated on it.
Okay. Then, yeah, go over that.
Yeah.
I don't see anything in my packet for personnel policy discussion?
I didn't either. Got that, an email late about it, and so I was gonna say, why don't we push that?
So, scratch that out.
Scratch that one. Number eight. And we'll send it out at the end of this week.
I didn't get any copies of the warrants for the town and the GM and Mountain National College.
Yep, they are here.
Mountain National Golf Course. Well, I was told that I would have them on Friday before. I don't have time to go individually through them right now.
Okay, so are you asking for them to be removed?
Correct.
Or would you like to abstain from looking at the, or signing them? Do we have to have a special meeting then to sign them?
If I'm told that I'm going to have material before on Friday, I expect to have it.
Okay. So, does the rest of the board members, do you feel ready to look at the warrants? Or would you like to push it off for now? Looks to be one, two, three from the Gulf. And one, two, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, and you just have warrants there, and this is not me being picky at this point here, but you four pushed very hard, and so did Dave, that when we sign these warrants, that we should know what they are.
Yeah, and so...
There's no invoices there.
They're right here.
Okay, so you want to take the time right now and go through every single invoice?
That would be, that's why I'm putting up for discussion if what the board wants to do with that.
And I would prefer that I promise on Friday, that I get my stuff on Friday.
So you prefer to have a special, select, a special meeting later in the week to handle that? Does anyone else want to do that? Or would you rather view them currently, and if there's questions, we can pull the invoices?
I don't have any issue with that, and we can, at that special meeting too, I don't know if we legally can do it, so correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. We ought to have a discussion about how we want to handle warrants going forward in the future.
I agree. I think that's good.
Yeah, and just to keep on with that conversation, I know that you folks have been told the way that the previous boards had done it was not legal. If you go to Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, a board can vote for one person to go in at any time to sign the warrants for the checks to go out.
Okay.
It's done all the time.
So, do you want to make that motion?
I was never told that, actually.
Yeah, that's the first thing here is, do you want to make, is that a motion that you'd want to make?
The motion was made years ago, but you guys are new, and you guys are in charge, so I don't know what you want to do, but you're the ones that all asked for, along with the town manager.
Right, so I'm asking...
Right now, I'm saying, I would like to have...
Time.
...to put on a discussion about how we're gonna move forward with warrants.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I would like to push out that I don't have time to go through those warrants right now.
Okay.
Tonight.
Yeah, that's fair. Does anyone have issue? One sec. Does anyone have an issue with postponing it to a later meeting this week? We would have to warn it.
The only question I would ask is, are there any employee paychecks or anything like that that we need to sign?
There, there are.
Okay, so...
You also have the town manager at, I'm sorry, I have not been at the last two meetings, a full board meetings. One of them I was in for a surgery procedure, but, you know, you can go through the video, I believe, the last meeting that I was at, the town manager had stated, while I was pulling the warrants from Jay before having him sign them, saying we need to say each one. The manager said, "Oh, you don't have to go through the payroll, Jim, because that's an automatic." So I would just like to know what we're gonna be doing moving forward. If, if, if on one hand, we don't have to review the payroll, then why are the payroll ones being here?
Okay, well, it's a discussion we can have later on when we approve the warrants, if that's how you want to handle it. Do we want to sign the payroll ones?
Is that one just clean payroll?
This one is a clean payroll one. So, we can leave that one on and address the other ones after.
Is that fine with you, Jim?
I would like to see what the payroll is for the town manager, how much is being paid for the week.
I don't know what kind of order this is in. Well, why don't we handle that when we get to it?
Okay.
If we want to leave that on, if we're fine with at least signing this one.
Well, I'm asking, what was the town manager's pay?
Well, I have to look this one through. I don't see it down here. Which is interesting.
Is that the rec department?
No, this is checks, warrants, Killington payroll.
Just a quick payroller.
I guess I can bring it up in, I will not be signing them, but I will bring it up underneath Bill's discussion of payroll, I mean of budget discussion.
Are you, oh, clear that for me again. Are you saying you don't want to sign any warrants?
No, I was told it.
Right, we're gonna push these off.
Okay, I thought you just said, "How about the payroll?"
I was saying, would you, would you be fine signing the payroll? Yes, sorry, I did have that.
I'm not gonna sign the payroll until I know what the town manager, let me see what it says.
Yeah. I don't see it on there, though.
Well, is he paid weekly, biweekly, monthly?
He's paid biweekly, like the rest of the people, except for the rec department, for some reason, and the highway guys. The town's moved to a biweekly, but...
So, so, okay. Interesting.
And the previous board said, "Why are we doing or whatever?", and for some reason, "Why are we making somebody do payroll every week when it's just easily biweekly?"
Yeah.
Can I see that, Jay, if that's just the payroll?
See it in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, if you have questions with that, we can...
The only thing I would say is, is there anything urgent that's gonna be late that we're gonna be...
So, basically, this here is, is the highway and the rec. This has not to do with the payroll that we just put out today. So, this is highway, rec, that's all it is. It's not the regular, because payroll was just put in today, I guess, for the biweekly.
Pretty comfortable with signing that?
Yeah, for the weekly people?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the last week of rec.
Yeah. Okay, cool. So, we'll put, we'll leave it on the schedule, and we'll just not do all of them, but we'll hand that still in town, or sorry, in line.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants for the payroll?
Well, we're...
When it comes up.
We still have a motion out on the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
So...
I'm scratching out, to sign warrants, only for payroll for what's presented on that, it's two sheets.
Okay, number ten, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I'm saying, personal policy discussion. I was not given anything, so take that out.
Yep.
All right?
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't either.
I got the, yeah.
And then, sorry about, but I did receive an email, I don't have my other phone with me, but it was saying that the other stuff would be out, and it talked about having the financials out. I don't know why, but we didn't get anything on Saturday.
Yeah, no. Okay.
So, I make a motion to approve the agenda, scratching number eight, the personal policy discussion, and only signing number ten, the warrants for the payroll that's presented to us for the rec and the, and other weekly paid employees.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Linda did send out an email saying she was gonna send us this stuff.
Financial budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know how to read.
Well, you said, you said you didn't have it on that phone, so I just wanted to...
No, I said on my, I don't have it on my other phone.
Okay, okay.
This is my personal phone, it's not my work phone.
Okay, I was just, just confirming with you. Okay, then.
Well, I don't understand why I was told I would have financials on Saturday. I don't understand how we're gonna be doing a budget review if I don't have the financials in front of me that's for the first month. Let's go.
All right, well, the, so for the people that just...
Not doing that level of...
Just got it, yeah, just got admitted. We are just approving the agenda, and we're moving on to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one for the special select board. Let's start with that one.
Did you take a motion for the approval of the agenda? Saying aye?
Yeah, we did.
I didn't say anything.
Okay.
I didn't hear you say it.
You made the motion, he made the second, I said all in favor.
Okay.
We said aye. Would you like to add your vote?
Aye.
Excellent.
Bill was talking.
I'm distracted.
Okay. Special, um, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yeah.
This is real simple.
Yes.
I don't understand what a warrant is in a nutshell, can you tell me?
Sure. In, in the context of the town, the warrant is bills.
Okay.
So, it's bills that we pay.
That's fine, thank you.
They're called warrants, though.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, so that was, we were saying, we have to approve all the bills that need to be signed, including the payroll.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. So, we're moving on to number three, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion for approval of the special select board meeting on August first? This was for approval signing of the ban in the GAN, which is the bond anticipatory note, and the grant anticipatory note for interim finding for project financing. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
I was having that.
Any changes or alterations that need to be made to these minutes? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Second one is gonna be a regular select board meeting. This was July twenty-eighth. Can I get a motion to approve the, or to approve the select board minutes for July twenty-eighth?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. I think there is one error in here, where Tuck's town manager was saying he had...
What page?
I'm looking for that. It would be on item four, down near the bottom, on the last block, where it says, "VEMER's Plan B for town employees' pensions, except for town manager who uses VEMER's Plan A." I believe he has VEMER's Plan D.
Maybe he has B.
Do you remember?
I could tell you in a second.
C?
I think, I think it was C.
Right, so, sorry, the town is B, he has C.
He has C.
It's recorded as A, which is incorrect. It is actually VEMER's Plan C.
Plans, at the time, would be enrolled in VEMER's Plan C, rather than VEMER's Plan B.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, so I have that one change to that. Does anyone else have any changes or issues with it?
No, I don't have anything.
So, can I, so can we get approval with that one alteration? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I was not here.
You're not here, so abstain? All right. That passes. That brings us to our first round of citizens' comments and concerns. I'm gonna go into the audience first, unless you have, let me just pull up the, just some here. I'm gonna go to the audience first. If you do have a comment or concern, just please raise your hand. We're gonna go across the room, state your name, and we'll go. George, I can see you over there, we can start with you over there.
Okay, George Grant. Dave, give me paperwork on that solar panel stuff here. I had to hand you guys the paperwork. Do you show me where you paid on this? I wish Dave was here, would make it easier, but I'm gonna show you where it says where you didn't pay it. So, it had to be paid somehow. It's two hundred and four thousand dollars.
Right.
It was not paid, George.
They weren't paid for?
They weren't paid for.
How were they not paid for?
Why don't you ask, I think the treasurer is on, from back then, with the Shawanza.
We had a, in that meeting...
You have an audit for that ended June twentieth, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, twenty-four.
I have paperwork here if you guys want it.
I know it, because it came up on a lot. And it came up sometime in twenty twenty-three, that the then-town manager, because I'm not gonna mention names, okay? Chris Carr and I, because I will mention his name since we are select board members, had a big discussion, if you want to pull up the PEG TV from whatever date, we were first advised that, we found out that there was two hundred and four thousand dollars worth of solar panels, and the board never approved any cost for any solar panels. The only solar panels we approved for was on a lease-style payment where we get a credit back, and it was for this building and for the highway department. And then, all of a sudden, these solar panels showed up on the library front steps and at the town hall. The library did never, they never wanted them there, but they were put up. And it came out that it was two hundred and something thousand dollars for it. The board had a meeting, we kind of got into... No, we approved a one-year note at two point nine five percent...
Right.
...to go further to another vote. And we said to the then-town manager, "If it fails, you better tell the solar company, they have to take the panels back." So now, from there, what I read, or I listened to the video, with Dave saying that it was paid from different restricted funds, there was never a vote for anyone to take any money from any other restricted funds or reserve funds, okay? And somehow, it's in the audit saying it's an unfunded debt. That's what's in the audit report.
I got the paperwork.
The last one, the last audit report.
That was like one forty-something.
George, do you have it, George? This is page forty-four, from the notes to the financial statements of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Note number fourteen, deficit fund balances. And the last item is solar account of these, two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So if someone's saying that we took money from one, two, three, four, every single one of the reserve funds, it was never brought to the board, and there's an issue there.
But it was paid.
I don't know if it's paid.
Oh, that's, that's what I'm asking, what's that?
This is your audit!
And yes, but what, what is that stating? That, I thought that's stating that it's paid.
No, it says it's not paid.
Oh, it says it's not paid, okay.
So, we're gonna have to dig through NIBR and try to track...
Note fourteen.
We'll have to track it down.
Track the money.
Yep.
Surprise.
Yeah.
I'm shocked that we're gonna have to do that.
Right, okay, yep, we'll look back into it.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, George?
Yes. I don't know. I wanted to know, because this is the fourth meeting, how many employees own healthcare?
Yeah.
Which, no one can answer that question.
None of us.
Doesn't seem like a really hard question. I mean, this is the fourth time I'm asking this.
Okay.
So, if the next meeting you could have that would be great, I appreciate it. Because I just want to calculate what you're doing, you understand what I'm saying? How many employees do what you're laying out?
Sure.
It's not, you know, is Abby leaving?
Uh, yes.
So, she's leaving too.
Actually, sorry.
How many people are we leaving here? I'm just, like, who's gonna run this? I mean...
Well, we hire people.
You got the highway guy's gone. You have her, that's the TIF, which is very important, as you know.
Department of Public Works, yes.
Yes. You have the fire chief, that was a fire chief, now he's a captain. You have the rec director leaving.
Okay.
Left.
Left. I mean, it's not a good situation, what's going on here.
And we have an acting chief, we've hired a rec director. We are currently interviewing for director of finance, and we have to obviously plan for foreman and that situation. I think at this time, we're not planning to fill Department of Public Works.
Why is everyone leaving, is my question?
Different reasons, some have opportunities elsewhere, different jobs, personal reasons.
So you just said that we're not gonna replace, I'm not gonna say the name, because you're gonna say it's not, it's not the person, it's the...
The position.
But the position was brought on to keep us up to date on all the TIF.
Right.
So we're not gonna hire someone on...
Yeah, that's not my understanding. Never talk about the...
Yeah, I think you're confusing positions here.
We're talking about Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
That's what Abby's position is.
Yeah.
And it got moved over that the public works was no longer gonna be Abby, it was moving over to the town manager, and Abby's position, you want to call it whatever, was for...
Department of Public Works.
It was for...
Which includes, I mean, she's been doing TIF work, yeah.
So who's gonna be coming in, taking that position?
Well, we have Stephanie, that we approved, come in as a contractor to...
To do what?
Do TIF work. We also have the town manager who's gonna be doing that. And then we have, you know, this is a plan of the town manager, we can ask him when it comes.
That's what I'm getting at. The town manager's supposed to manage the town, he's not supposed to take care of TIF. You understand? If you give him too many jobs, he's gonna be...
No, 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 no. George, George, it's my understanding he was gonna replace someone for the TIF.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. The TIF is obviously gonna have someone that's assigned to, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because he gave me no instructions on that for the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Well, I, I guess I get into, when I read your thing there, it's actually removing that position, even though it says the public works, it is Abby's position. As the public works, we have never changed it. So, we'll get to that when we get into the budget.
Well, I don't know how it's, all I know is what's defined in the budget. I don't know what names go with what people in the budget.
Right, right.
I guess this is where you can kind of pick up the feeling of these only board members sitting here from, for the last seven years, that, you know, and I had said this at one point, like, you know, Jay, you're, you're sitting there and you're saying in, in your run for select board member, lies, lies, no, no lies ever mentioned, but then you're like, they go into executive session, and they're going into so many. At least that board was telling you folks that we were going into something and talking. But, Bill, you came out at one point and said, "Five members select were like, 'When can we start breaking up into these groups or whatever?'" And I did answer and say, "At some point, we should be sitting here and saying, 'We're gonna make a committee.'" Let me finish. We're gonna make a committee, and you could put two people on from the board and get people from the public. But now I've got policy that I have no idea who's working on that, but it's gonna be brought to. I'm told, you have been talking to Dave, I'm told from you that you're, you single-handedly is taking on some budget.
No, you don't understand that discussion point, because we haven't gotten to it yet.
We haven't got there yet. We can discuss it when we get there.
So, please, cease and desist talking about that until we get to that on the agenda.
Right now...
Because you're talking out of your...
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
Right now, we're, right now, we're on citizens'.
You've been known to say...
You don't even know what that is.
Go ahead.
Right now, we're on citizens' comments and concerns.
Go ahead.
The question was about Abby's position, Department of Public Works.
Are you replacing her?
Not at this time for Department of Public Works.
And who's gonna do the TIF?
The TIF is separate from that. The TIF is still gonna be done, I have to talk to Dave, I don't know his plan on it.
Well, how about we talk to Dave in an open meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd rather, like you discussed the other thing, I'd rather be in an open meeting where we see what's going on.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's just we have, we have open meetings.
You guys were just saying about the other thing...
We have open meetings twice a month.
...with warrants, that we'll do like a Friday meeting. But most people can't make a Friday meeting. People schedule themselves to make this meeting.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So now, we don't know what's going on at that meeting, then we're back at another meeting.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that...
If we can do it in public, would be a lot better, in my opinion.
All these are done in public, and they're gonna be continued to done, be done in public.
Well, anyway, if you're gonna hire another person, you should use them as a subcontractor, so you're not involved with pensions. I know Dave said, "Oh, we're only paying seven percent of the pension, and the state pays the rest." But we're the one paying the state, okay? So, if every municipality takes that theory to it, your pension funds are gonna be through the seal, and that's what's going on tomorrow.
Okay.
So you should look at it. I just have one other thing, I'll be done on...
No problem, what's one other thing?
On the dirt deliveries, which I've used, it's great.
You say dirt?
Dirt.
Dirt, okay.
Yeah, yeah. The town will supply you some dirt, because I gotta get rid of it.
Okay.
He knows what I'm talking about.
Okay.
But, you should be careful what you're doing, you should, because I've done it with the highway over on Route Four. We have to fill out an application towards it, where the dirt's going, what you're doing with it. Right now, I think I have someone encroaching on one of my properties. When I had a property up on McCullin Drive, they brought over a hundred loads up there, which a place that didn't perk, and it perked, and I think that's illegal. So be careful where you're bringing the dirt.
All right, thanks for the advice on that.
If you could get, like, you know, they had a thing, like, "I'm doing this with it, ba, ba, ba." If you have to show where your property is, what you're doing with it, it's just...
Right, protects the property.
They were supposed to be growing up something a couple of years ago regarding that, and I don't know if it ever happened or not.
Okay, about policy of approval...
Yeah, I think that was on Ricky's watch, as he was the foreman, that we put up the board said to, and nothing ever came along.
I think this is how we got this. I think this is how we got this.
Former town manager, I'm trying to learn that too. Yeah, I was going to do, and I don't know, I don't know if it happened or not, so...
Okay, we can check on that, because yeah, now that's...
There is no...
That's good. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, George. Come across the room, is there anyone else? Across, no? No? All right, so you're none, gonna go online. Is online, does anyone have any comments, concerns for this first go around? We'll also have one later on, and if it's something that we're gonna touch on in the agenda, we'd like to touch on it then. Okay, hearing nothing, gonna push forward. So we have Board of Liquor Control.
Peggy. I have Wait Family Restaurant LLC doing business as Back Country Cafe. They've applied for a first and a third.
I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with Back Country Cafe, doing business, whatever, for a first and a third to move forward.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, for, does anybody have issues? Nope? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Do you have any more, Peggy, or?
No, that was it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Errors in admissions, I mean, there's nobody here from the board, and there's nobody here, the town manager, to explain to us. Push it to the next meeting.
I agree, so there's no, just, there's no listeners here, right? Because I did, I also had a question on that.
At that point there, I'd like to bring up about two months ago, there were some people in the meeting, and they were asking for an update, and we did give instructions to the town manager to get them in for a meeting. Where does that stand? Just pass it on to the town manager?
Yeah.
Public Works update.
Hold on, take a nap. All right, so since we have that, just gonna move on. Public Works, TIF, FEMA, Abby, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I do. I didn't do a formal written report. I'll do that for the last meeting, more extensive, where everything is at. But just kind of briefly, there are a couple of things going on right now. Road 1B is nearly complete. Pretty much the last thing we have left to do is, or that Markowski has to do, is install the bollards by Killington Sports and address the cobblestone. We've been going back and forth with them on that a bit. We have decided that, you know, if, one option would be to remove the cobblestone and install grass, and we have a quote from Markowski for about $99,000 to do that. The sticking point for us right now is that the installation of the cobblestone was not done 100% to spec. So, in reality, we could go back to them and say, you have to have it to spec. So, we are looking for like a price difference in that, and we're not going to pay 100% for work that was not completed, 100%. So, still negotiating with Markowski on that. They have a change order to complete work by the end of August. So, I have not heard back from them. I went to them and asked for, you know, 20% discount off the installation of the cobblestones, and I have not heard back yet, so...
So, we're still going back and forth?
That's...
That's also related to the pulling?
Pulling them, no, that's just for the work that was done.
Okay.
And then we have a quote for $99,000 for pulling them and installing grass instead. But the work that was done, 20% discount, which is about $50,000 on that. Road, Phase 1A, we have 100% plans, they're currently being reviewed by USDA, which is one of the requirements before we can go out to bid on that project. Water, 1 through 3A, installation of the tank is nearly complete, that'll be finished by the end of August up on Shagback Mountain. And then, the large generator, very large generator, was installed at the high-service pump station on Route 4 on Friday. Picture should be in the paper hopefully this week. Water, Contract 4 is continuing, and we're looking at options with the contractor for permanent paving for this fall for Killington Road and East Mountain Road. Along the same line, for the water system, Board of Water Commissioners, I did put out the ad for people, not a lot of people have come forward, I've reached out to a number of people. The KPAA is going to put it in their newsletter. But my hope is, by August 25th, to present you all with names of people who are interested in serving on the board, and then you can take it from there if you want to meet with the people, interview them, however you want to proceed from there. But then I'll primarily, I'll be passing it off to Brian, because I will be gone. The new operator, Brian, he, he started earlier in July, he's getting his feet wet on the project, he's been meeting with potential users of the system, a lot of people have been reaching out to him. He's working on understanding the ordinance and the connection process, and connecting with people at the state and Vermont Rural Water.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Abby? No motions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, Abby, when we did hire you on, we put you through a three-month class for Class 2 or whatever, water?
Class 3.
Class 3, okay. And I think you did a great job while you're here, so don't take any of this personally, okay? All right, please. But the whole plan was, is to bring in Abby as the Public Works slash the Water Operator to start, and there is nothing in the budget showing for this other gentleman's position at this time. So when you say that, you know, Abby's leaving, but for some reason, you guys want to get into a budget review that, you know, has never been done before, and, but there's assumptions in here that this is where I kind of take it, I take it personally, like, no one has come to anyone that was on the budget to work on the budget that's put in place. You could have even made a call to Tom Yarrell instead of calling him a temporary. Tom is a well-known town manager throughout the state of Vermont, that I think put in close to 10 years down in Springfield. He was a full-time town manager in Pittsfield, and he's done other jobs at other places. He's put the budget together. He worked with the bookkeeper, since I can't say her first name.
Jim, do you have any more questions concerning the Public Works Department?
No, 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 no.
Do you want to talk about the budget?
No, I'm right now saying, Abby, your job was hired on, and you put three months in for a Class 3. Why did we go out? Maybe it's a question to the town manager, because it's not in the budget. If Abby didn't quit, it wouldn't free up this money. So with Abby putting in her resignation, okay, the budget's not there. You might say that, you know, it gets carried over to when the water line comes on, but we have to carry this for, because there's no, no, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be any revenue.
For life, yeah.
Over a year.
Yeah. So that's...
Go ahead.
Can I answer, please? Because we have, we have talked about this before in the board meetings.
Yeah.
So, it is a water enterprise fund that needs to be, I don't know if it's been set up in Nemrock yet or not, but the plan is, the plan has been, that it will be set up for beginning of fiscal year '26. We have already incurred expenses for the water system that need to be carried by the Water System Enterprise Fund. The initial revenues for that will be as people are connecting to the system, which was the entire reason for hiring a water operator now, because in my position, I didn't have the capacity to follow TIF, follow the projects, and also try to get people connected to this system, and everything that encompasses that, you know, source protection plans, we will have an operating system come October that somebody's going to have to check on every day. And I knew I didn't have the capacity of that, for that, so that is why we brought on a water operator now. And like, as I said, part of his job is to start getting people connected to the system. I did a presentation of the draft water budget, where the initial revenues will be the allocation fees, which he will be working on collecting. There may be, you know, there'll be like a lapse, it won't all happen at once, we're gonna have more expenses at first, that then will, should be recouped by, you know, recovered by the allocation fees.
And we have to talk about it, I mean, you've explained it to me before, because I had the same question.
No, I explained that we hired Abby on for, okay? There's nothing in this current budget for 2026.
Okay.
Showing another employee for the water.
Yeah.
Would Abby step in now? I guess now, there's money there.
Okay.
That's all.
Yes. I, Rob Kowalski, Killington, I have a question, so regarding, and I don't have any of the background on this Markowski thing, but just a very straightforward question. If there's $100,000 at stake, with all due respect to everyone in this room, I'm not convinced, with what I've heard, that we have the, what I'm gonna call the A-plus team, going against Markowski to recover that money. And what I mean by that is, do we have a town attorney who's on this, going against Markowski? Or are we just talking about town employees that are chatting with them back and forth?
We have a contract with Markowski, and the importance of that change order to the end of the month, there are components within that contract that we can then put to an attorney and put in place.
Okay. Did we hold money back, Abby, at one point also?
That is, yeah, we did hold money back.
We held out over $70,000, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
George, go ahead.
George Brandt, Abby, you're saying that you couldn't do both jobs. You're leaving, you have one guy, how's he gonna do both jobs?
Not a question for me.
Well, for you guys.
He's doing the water.
I get it. Well, just take care of the TIF department.
Again, we can talk to Dave when he comes back for his plane on that.
Okay. I'll do it in the next meeting.
Yeah. Any other questions on Public Works update, TIF?
Yeah, actually, we're waiting for River Road to be paved, because about a million people ask me.
I, so, I stopped overseeing the highways department in April.
Paul's on the, the town manager now.
Yeah, I was just, people asked me a bunch today, so I was just curious.
I thought the last thing I saw, I said July 31st, the road was gonna be closed down or...
It was closed, yeah.
But it was also gonna be paved right away, whatever, but I think they might be holding off until the camp's end.
I think they're waiting for the coverage to actually, I mean, make sure they're settled in.
There is a contract that they had to have it done by X amount of time, so...
All right. Cool. Moving on, let's give it over personnel policy, as amended, going to FY '26 budget review. Bill, this is something that you put together, you're meeting with Dave.
Right. So, so basically, we're not reviewing the first month of FY '26?
Right.
Okay, we're not, okay, we're not doing that. What we're looking at is, we're looking at the budget as it was put together and presented to the town for town meeting, that the town voted on.
Yes.
Okay? And so we know, okay, from the beginning, okay, the town voted on a particular taxable amount of revenue that would be generated, and also a particular amount of expenses that would occur. Okay?
Do you have a PowerPoint? I was told that there was gonna be a PowerPoint for people to look at.
Oh, you have PowerPoint, right?
I have a copy, but you got people online to share, and you got people here.
Yep. Thank you.
I sent you an email late today.
This one's, uh...
No, I know.
No, this, this one's...
I know, I understand.
I think there's an email that says you would be doing a PowerPoint.
Um, I don't know if there is an email that says...
Yeah. Oh my God, don't look at my... That's the way, that's what I was looking for. This is from you, right, Bill?
Yeah.
I think he got one from Linda.
Yeah, he, I think he made some, um, just grammatical changes. No content changes, right?
No content changes.
Okay.
Yeah. I sent it to Linda, and you copied you guys on it.
And...
And that went out this morning at 11:50.
I don't know, and I'll need someone online, if they can just tell me if they can see this, or is this only in the room?
Ollie?
I can't see it yet.
Okay, then, then I need to hit a button. Drag it over, it's hard to do two things, so... Come on, bring it back. There we go. Share. Screen on. Take that. I feel like I'm at work. Thank you.
Good.
All right, so, this is...
Okay, so there are a set of assumptions, these were the overriding assumptions. It is what it is, okay? The town approved we could raise so much money, the town approved we could spend so much money, okay? And those are basics, okay, that are immutable, okay? The town also said that we're gonna have a $375,000 shortfall, okay, carried over from last budget, and that there'd be no income carryover, obviously, because it's a shortfall, okay? The other thing is, the totals do not include bonds raised, money spent for development of the Killington Water System funded through the TIF. I'm learning more and more and more about different budgets that are dark, okay, to this 792, $7,912,000 expenditure, okay? And that's something at a later date, I think we should talk about.
Yeah.
Okay?
I think we talked about it during the TIF vote, and it was presented by a board prior, and I gave you documents on the agreement and everything, and if you listen to Abby, and you listen to Stephanie, how it goes, it's not in, it's not in the general fund budget, that's clear, and it was put to, and it was transparent to every single voter in here, and every single voter outside, and also in the agreement and with it or whatever, it states that we would be using up to $1.3 million worth of general fund reserve funds, it specifically says it there. So it's not put into that.
Jim, Jim, the issue is not that it's quote-unquote "not put in there." The issue is that there are funds that are being commingled, okay, and they're not being annotated clearly, so people understand where the money's coming from, what it's going to, okay? It's okay for the town to run separate budgets, but when things start getting commingled, okay, you really need to say, this is happening, there's an income, there's incoming from this budget to that budget, okay, so that people understand how the town is actually spending money.
And I think that the Public Works Director at the time, that was underneath Public Works Director, was giving us upayments on stuff. We had monies that was also, and you said this past budget, we're in the 2026 budget, the $375,000 is from the 2024 budget, okay? So, it's not in the 2025 budget. The $375,000 shortfall came over from the 2024 budget, okay? Because that's what the auditors audited, and that's what the number, the 2025 audit has not done. You only know what you know.
No, no, I only know the documents...
He's going off the document.
I only know the documents I was given, Jim. And all of this presentation, okay, with the exception of some personnel issues, okay, which are identified on here, we're, we're conversations with Dave, every other thing in here was taken out of publicly available documents, including town reports from 2023 and 2024, okay? So, if it's not on the page of paper I was given, okay, or if it wasn't in the town report of 2023 or 2024, we don't know about it. It's as simple as that.
You don't understand municipal budgets.
Excuse me, I understand, I understand what is documented.
No, you can raise your voice at me, and he can tell me talking out of you or whatever. I am being nice.
Okay, Jim.
He's saying talking out of my whatever. I am not talking out of my whatever.
Jim.
The 2000, the 3...
Right now, I would like Bill to continue his presentation.
375,000 is from 2024, okay? And that is what was told from.
If you have issues, we can address them.
So maybe you should ask and talk to the auditors, and talk into others.
Jim, right now, Bill is doing a presentation on his work.
It is listed on, in line 160, as FY '24 shortfall reimbursement. Yes, it is.
Right here, 160.
It is listed there, and it is listed in the 2026 budget. Yes, it is, okay?
So then, why do you have totals including reimbursement, town for 375,000?
Because that total...
Shortfall in 2025.
Can we let him get through the presentation and then ask questions?
Let's change that from 2025 to 2024, so that everyone's...
Thank you, Bill, so we have it right.
Exactly.
All right.
Okay?
Instead of arguing with me.
Well, you're the one that's arguing.
No, you are.
Jim, this is devolving into childish behavior.
It sure is. When someone says talking out of you, I don't accept that.
So, I would like Bill to continue his presentation, and if we have issues, we can address them at the end when he's finished, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Let me get back to where we were.
Okay, other budget assumptions, okay? And this is not casting stones at anybody, okay? It's where we are. The original budget was developed by a temporary town manager and the prior select board. The current town manager has said many times, he doesn't know how the budget was developed, okay? He said that, and he's trying to learn how to manage the budget, okay? We have four new select board members, okay, who are new to the office. We can only rely on publicly available documents for our knowledge about the budget and how it was put together.
So I would like to scratch out temporary. There is no such thing as a temporary town manager.
Okay, Jim, right now, can you please let him finish?
I'm making statements, and he's done with this page.
Well, the task at hand, okay, the task at hand...
Don't page by page.
The task at hand, which is what's important.
Yes.
Is where, the whole idea of this was to try to develop an understanding and to validate sources of revenue, okay, that were listed in the budget, to understand and validate departmental expenses, okay, and to make sure we can manage income and expenditures within voter-approved budget to minimize impact on town finances and future budgets. It's basically to start developing an understanding of the budget for this group, so that we can manage the town financially.
So I would like to say, one of your first lessons, from me talking out of my whatever you were gonna say, is that we go back to the second page, where it's the 2024, and with no zero, 2025 income carryover, what a board is supposed to be doing is that you take the 2025, whatever the auditors give you sometime, Patrick, I don't know, anywhere between November and January before it goes out, the 2025, over or under, will be going to the next budget that this group will be working on for 2027. That's how it works. A lot of people that come into municipal or school budgets believe, since they were in the private industry, that you're working on the current year for whatever, okay? So, but, well, okay, we've already gotten past that that's 2024, so the budget with no zero carryover, that part there really shouldn't be there, because we don't know what 2025 is. We don't know what it is, so it's not zero.
No, but the current budget, the budget, okay, that was presented to the town, and the budget, when I go to town hall and ask for a copy of the budget, the budget that the town hall provides does not have any carryover income from the prior year in it today.
And it shouldn't.
It shouldn't, and I'm just saying, it doesn't. That's all I'm saying, it doesn't. It could, we know...
It kind of changes when you add the 25 there.
We know, we know budgets are effectively guesses, and we know budgets rise and fall based on changing circumstances, okay? This is what we're currently looking at today.
Okay.
Okay, other things that we're looking at today, there's some outside influences, these are just inflation statistics that we're dealing with, okay? And you can go home and check your bills, okay? Like, I looked at the monthly energy index of 12.5%, okay? I said, that can't be, okay? And Mary showed me, okay? Okay, it's just, there are, there are things that are going on in the outside world that are impacting our budget, and we have to take them into account. And that's, that's all this is, okay? That's all that's trying to say. Okay? And I did make some adjustments on the calculations, which is the next page, so that people can see, okay? I did make some adjustments on the calculations, okay, based on inflation, okay?
Sorry, one second. I'm not paging down low.
Yeah, okay. I, I, one more.
There we go.
Okay, everybody can put their own numbers into those adjustments. These are just the adjustments I use for the budget. Okay, they're guesses. I will admit they're guesses, and everyone should look at them that way. But we have to keep track of them over the course of the year. Okay? Now, let's, now we'll get into it. Revenue, okay? There are, obviously, there's a whole bunch of spreadsheets behind, behind this, okay? 15 pages or so. Municipal taxes, okay? The budget is, calculates, I, I looked at the budgets for like the last four years. Okay? And the budgets all calculate, in general, some level of underpayment. And just making some assumptions about people aren't gonna pay their taxes. Okay, so you have to adjust the tax rate for that. This year had a particularly low underpayment, based on what I could find. Okay, it was only $62,000. Okay, the average underpayment was, was about $187,000. Okay, so that says that there is a, there's a possibility, okay, that we could come in, in collected tax revenue, before delinquencies, before delinquencies of about $100,000. Okay? And we need, we need to be aware that that's a possibility there. Now, part of that could be that the grand list numbers have changed. Okay, so the tax calculation I did is not accurate. That's a distinct possibility, okay? That since the budget was, was printed, okay, the grand number, the grand list has been refined, and that number could be small. Okay? But that's a risk in the budget that was handed out to the general public.
Right.
Okay? Delinquent year tax, taxes, okay? Well, the initial budget said zero, okay, was gonna be collected, okay, for FY '26, okay? And that's obviously not correct.
It is.
Why?
Why wouldn't we do?
Why would you say we're not gonna collect any delinquent taxes from prior years?
Why would you put down that you're going to be collecting this year, say, $4 million?
Okay, well.
No, 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 can I finish?
Go ahead.
I know you're on the defensive, but can I finish?
No, I'm on the defensive.
You are, because every time I say something.
You're asking a question, I'm trying to answer it.
Well, I'm gonna finish my question, and then I'll go, or I'll explain. It's $4 million. So if you're gonna say you have $4 million worth of revenue this year, okay? And let's say, at the end of the year, you only collected 3.6, all right? On current. But then you received prior delinquencies. I got you maybe the $400,000, so you're up to four. Why would you then add in, when you already charged everybody the $4 million? You were expecting to get that $4 million. You billed it out as $4 million. Just because you didn't receive it in, you will receive it in at some time, you would not add it to the budget again. That's double invoicing a budgeted number that was already done. And the board has gone through this multiple times in the last 15 years.
It should be noted that the actuals on the budget, okay, were $210,000 collected for delinquent taxes in 2023.
And there was zero budgeting.
Seventy-five, okay? And last year was $570,000.
But there was zero budgeting.
Okay, but the thing is, okay, what I'm trying to say, Jim, okay, without that money, you're gonna totally fail your income.
No, you're not.
And go to a tax sale.
You go to a tax sale. But anyway, you're trying to say that I.
Yes, delinquent taxes.
But that's already delinquent coming in. So if I, if I build out $4 million to IBM, and they short me $200,000, do the next year I bill them again $200,000?
No, they still have an outstanding bill. You just haven't collected the revenue for it in this year.
Bingo.
Okay, it's, it's.
Bingo.
It's still, but, but.
You can still budget it.
No, you don't, because you already budgeted the year before.
And you can still budget.
And you have the money coming in from the delinquents. I'll move on, keep going.
Okay, also, okay, it, it, on this sheet, it doesn't show it, but in one of the risks coming on, okay, it looks like, okay, in 2025, okay, we, we have uncollected taxes of $680,000.
Which is about probably the average. $600,000, $700,000 is the average? And then the following years or whatever people pay there, or whatever?
That's not the number that calculates out, by the way. So.
There's a mismatch in that.
Yeah, there's a mismatch, that's not the number that calculates out. Okay, in terms of what happens on average. Okay, so, just to give you that, okay?
Go to the golf.
Okay, the golf transfer account, okay? There's nothing historically recorded for this 145K, okay, that is put in the budget. Okay, I've looked at the golf budget. I can't find anything in the golf budget that says they're gonna add 145K to the town. There is a bond payment that the, that the golf makes, okay, that goes to pay restricted fund bonds and stuff like that. But this 145K, I can't validate.
Okay, so I gotta repeat.
That's why I have declared it, okay, not income.
You declared it, okay.
Well, for purposes of this analysis.
You have like strong words. So $145,000 worth of revenue was put into the, talked through the town manager and the board. If you take a look, if we had the financials, which I thought that one email said I would have it on Saturday, but I don't, okay? The golf course currently, and Patrick, you've been going to a lot of meetings, so this kinda shocks me that you don't remember this. But the golf course owes about $365,000 to the town since night, uh, since 2015, 16. Prior board, nobody here was on it. They lent money, oh, no, they did, they said they didn't lend money. They just paid the bills for the beginning of the year. They paid, that's what they said.
The golf courses.
No, the town paid the bills. So if you look at the, if you look at the treasures report from one of the previous months or whatever, you'll see there's $365,000 that is owed to the town from the golf course. And the board, the previous board, was concerned with the taxpayers' tax bill and said it is now time to start taking some of that money back. And we put in our budget that we would be taking $145,000 back to help with the tax rate.
I couldn't find that documented in any of the select board meeting notes.
Yeah, well, maybe you should.
That doesn't mean they weren't there, but I couldn't find them.
But this is where I get back to. You're all four new people, and you're jumping into things, and you're not asking anyone. You didn't even call Tom Yenelli up and say, hey, Tom, where'd you get this 145,000? The guy would ask the question.
Was this reflected on the golf budget?
No, the 145 was.
The town doesn't approve the golf budget, because the golf is not a town budget. The golf is an enterprise fund, and it owes the town $365,000.
However, there was a line item just before this called golf administrative account, okay? That was originally budgeted in the $30,000 to $40,000.
Thirty-six thousand.
Okay? And that was up to $72,000. And that was in the golf budget. The golf budget says that they're gonna pay the administrative account $72,000. So one line item was in the budget for the golf course, and one wasn't. Okay? And so I can only go in an analysis with what's down on paper, okay? And I'm trying to keep it so that it's publicly verifiable with the documents that are published by the town.
Okay, so while you're doing your rewrite or your review, the $145,000 was taken from the $365,000.
I wanna see that documented somewhere.
And, and, and I'm not gonna say names, but the bookkeeper did this budget with the town manager, Tom Yenelli. And it's well-known that the $145,000, if you wanna start going back to videos, or ask Chris Carr, or ask Rob Heckler, instead of just taking ass options, okay, you and me, then I'm just telling you, the $145,000 is coming from the money that's owed to the golf course, and they have $600,000. They were told it was happening. Is it our job individually to make sure that a town manager, or a bookkeeper, or anybody does their work correctly? We're not day managing them. The $145,000, please remove from your negative and put it back.
Until I can validate that we're gonna get paid that, this is an assumption. Okay, and, and I'm sorry, because six months from now, this could come back when we don't get the 145.
Right here, right now. There's $365,000 owed to the town from the golf course. Put on the agenda for the next meeting that I would like to have a motion that we take for this year's current budget, $145,000 as presented in the so-called budget.
That's fine, that's good. That's good, that's a great idea.
Well, instead of doing all this BS, why don't you just come out and say that?
This is how we identify it.
Yeah.
No, you're attacking previous boards, previous town managers. No, you are, you are, you are, Patrick, so stop it, and let's just move on.
No one's getting attacked.
Let's just move on.
No, no, there's, there's no one's getting attacked, okay? We're trying.
Your one board member, when are we gonna have a committee? Form a committee for finances?
No one is attacking anything.
This is ridiculous.
No, this is what you guys have been doing for a year and a half. Yeah, you, you, you.
Give me an example, Jim, give me an example. What have I done? One example.
The presentation that Bill is doing, it is not attacking. You identified something that may be a mismatch.
So why don't you come and talk to me and ask me this before you did this presentation?
I'm not trying to.
No, you did, why did you do this without coming?
We were all sent this.
I was sent this Friday afternoon at 4:30.
That's when we all got it.
Yeah, well, he's been talking to, why didn't he talk for the last two months?
Talked to Dave about it. He's been meeting with Dave to figure this out. This is the presentation to us.
We're a board, we're not one person.
This is the presentation to you.
In public.
This is the presentation to you.
When did we form this group to do this? That's all I'm asking.
The group was formed now. That's the whole idea of having it in a public meeting.
Before you went, before you went to do this freaking 40-page whatever bullshit, when did you get permission to go to the town manager to do this? That's a simple question.
He, he's a select board member with a concern. He met with the town manager to go over those concerns, and he's documented them.
Why didn't he come to the board and say, hey?
He is.
Do I have permission to move forward?
Because you don't need permission to talk to the town manager.
You need permission to come forward.
He isn't taking any action.
Keep going, keep going, let's go on to the next one.
Okay, housing land payment is not income. Okay, now this one is an interesting one, okay? The town will legitimately get paid if Great Gulf pays us, and I assume they will, okay? The town will legitimately get paid $210,000.
No, 350.
No, 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 they've already paid, please, let me finish.
Let him finish, Jim, you need to let him finish.
So basically, this is an interesting thing, and I, I've actually went through NIMRIC to try and find it, to try to just figure out what the hell's going on with it, okay? Back in June of 2023, the select board, according to the select board minutes, okay? There was a $2.2 million TIF expense note that existed at the time. Okay? And they split that to be a $1.5 million bond anticipation note to pay for the TIF expense note. And then they split aside $700,000 of the expense note to go for workforce housing. Okay?
Incorrect.
That was in the minutes, Jim.
Well, I didn't, maybe, maybe I didn't read those minutes, but the $700,000 was taken, went to a, you know what, guys? I just wish you would ask.
It was in the minutes.
Okay, so it's also in the minutes that the town borrowed $700,000 from the special public planning commission money. That's where the money was taken from. It was not taken from the board or whatever.
Can we let him finish before we interrupt?
It was in the minutes.
We all understand that you think that this is trash, okay? I get that, I understand it, can you let him?
Yeah, why don't you just go through the bottom of your hand right now?
The other thing is, okay, okay, of that, okay, there was no documentation on any of this money, okay, in the town report for 2023 or the town report for 2024. Okay, either the spending or the money coming in. Okay, the property was purchased on 7/7/23 for $679,168.
I hate to say it, but wrong.
Jim, just let him finish.
Jim, I have a report right here out of the town financial system that says that.
The land was purchased for $700,000 plus all other costs. The land was bought, if you look at the property transfer tax, the land was bought for $700,000. I don't give a shit, let the bookkeeper freak in their footset.
I'm looking at the total expenditures. The total expenditures, $679,100.
So we don't know it's wrong?
We don't know it's wrong.
But I'm telling you.
Right, so that's what this is for.
Here's the report, right out of the system.
If we can do it civilly, that's what this meeting is for.
When I say $700,000, then I get yelled at saying, no, it was $67. No, that's what you just said, I said $700,000.
That's what the town was purch, that was purchased at.
No, it was purchased for $700,000 plus all costs.
Okay.
Maybe we gotta get back to the bookkeeper putting the stuff in NIMRIC.
The town report says $769,168.
That's what our record said.
And it was paid for out of the checking account.
Now, that's what your NIMRIC report says.
That's what the NIMRIC report says.
The land was purchased for $700,000 plus cost.
Received from the Killington Resort. There was a payment received from the Killington Resort on 6/30/24 for $350,000. That money was deposited into what looks like a restricted account in the financial system, the account number was 325.
That was the way the money was borrowed from the planning commission.
The restricted fund 395 is not documented in any annual report.
Right, because it's a purchase and a reimbursement.
Right, it's a purchase, right, so it's not documented, so the public couldn't track that money. Okay? Great Gulf, okay, also, okay, made two payments of $70,000 each. One was on 2/25/25, and one was on 4/17/25. The total value was $140,000. Okay? Again, that was not documented in the town budget. And the money was deposited to the restricted 325 account.
Right.
Okay? The reason I say, okay, this is not income, is because when this $210,000 comes in, okay, it will also have to go into that 325 account, okay? Hence, it's not quote unquote "income to the town."
Right, but you're wrong about that, but that's okay. The $700,000 is already reimbursed back to the group, the planning commission. Listen, I don't do the report. Oh, I don't care, I don't do this. Talk to your bookkeeper, talk to your NIMRIC, and talk to your town manager.
So Jim, right now, we're identifying issues.
And right now, I'm trying to correct it.
Yeah, and these can be steps, but can we do them in a constructive way?
Well, I wanna say the $700,000 has already been paid back to that one, okay? And there have been many meetings or whatever.
Is it, is it extra money? Yeah, I mean, because the $350,000 from the resort and the $140,000 from Great Gulf was not on this line item, okay, house land payment in prior budgets.
You might have to go back to the bookkeeper to find out why it wasn't. And I think we even had a meeting here with Mr. Geeter speaking one day, that you were on the board, and maybe, maybe you were on the board too, and asked Monica directly back there, who was the treasurer, where the funds were for that line item for, and you admitted that there was payments, Monica?
Yep.
All right, so, you know what, maybe not everything gets into your minutes, okay? And maybe some things are recorded, and maybe you need to have some history, somebody that knows what was going on, but whatever, whatever.
If they don't get into minutes, and they don't get into the budget, how can we be transparent to citizens of the town? How can they know?
Because it was, and it's not our job to make sure that we don't look at NIMRIC every single day. They don't even understand NIMRIC on their own every single day. So they're moving things around. The $700,000, it was $700,000, not $679. It was borrowed, and the select board did go to the planning commission to ask to take from their special fund project $700,000, okay? And then it was replaced to them when a loan was taken out from the town manager. Not gonna say which one, but that's their job, and that's what they did.[1635.26] town manager, not gonna say which one, but that's their job, and that's what they did. And then this select board member, for a year and a half, stayed on top of the resort and Great Gulf to enter into what they showed up at that big meeting, the Happy Gilmore check for $700,000. Okay? That you were all there for, Bill. So if you want to talk about it, there it is.
Oh, no, I'm saying this is real money to the town. I'm saying this is real money to the town.
So it was paid, so take the two-
I'm saying it's real money to the town.
Well, the 210 was already paid back.
We're just saying it shouldn't be counted in revenue, that's what I'm saying.
No, it should be counted in revenue, since it was already paid back at some point, and it was probably part of the $375,000 shortfall. But that's the town manager and-
Well, we will get clarification if that, if you have disagreement on that.
Which I think maybe like when I said, we probably should have pushed this out while the town manager was here. But he's probably not gonna know anything anyway, so let's just keep on going.
That's tough.
Yeah, particularly since the budget was-
Right.
-developed before he was the town manager.
Absolutely.
Right. Okay, so, and again, if there were some notes associated with this stuff in the budget, it would be easy.
There's plenty of notes. There's plenty of notes.
Okay, well.
Well, let's continue on with it.
Okay, there are some other minor budget changes, okay, in zoning fees, okay, were adjusted based on history. Okay, traffic ticket fees were adjusted based on history. Local options taxes, okay, were adjusted based on history.
Why is the local option tax showing a positive $63,000 when the town already knows, and a lot of businesses I'm hearing, inns and restaurants are down 20% to 30%, yet the board took a conservative look and raised it a little bit, but took into concern about that. So let's go to the line item. What page is it for, for the revenue? How much were, how much was the board saying? What page is it on?
It's at the very end, it's at the very end of the revenue.
Local option tax.
If you look at the local option tax, okay, the local option tax-
It's the second page of revenue.
It's the second page. Okay. The local option tax-
This one, right?
No.
No, no. Well, actually, that was an annotated at the back. Okay, that was annotated, but go to, go to the, yeah, I did, I did, yeah, go to the, one more.
One more?
Yeah, one more. Okay, so the current budget was listed at $643,000. Okay, so that was, that was the budget that was put in. Okay, last year, we generated $701,000. Okay, so I added $60,000 in as a probable to bring the, bring the budget possible, okay, under 2026 to $706,000. Now, I agree with you, okay, that business can be down, but I also think you need to understand that prices are also up. Okay, so just because business is down, doesn't mean that that number is not, is going to go down.
Prices were already up in 2025.
Yeah, right.
If you take 2023, prices were up.
If you go back to history, you can see that-
651 in 2023, 674 in 2024, 701 in 2025, and the board felt that it was proper to take about 10% off of the total. If you look at local option tax in FY25, it was budgeted for 300,000 in the first quarter. We came in at 348. It was budgeted for 72,000. We got 75. Then all of a sudden, the third quarter, we went from 130 down to 95. The local option tax in quarter four, we budgeted 140, came in at 182. We have, we had somebody that was on the board that has quite a few restaurants and knew what was going on and felt that it was better to take 10% off. But if you want to take and add another $5,000, like you said in the beginning, it's just-
It's a guess.
It's a guess. So why can't you accept the guess that department heads came into board meetings and put their budgets forward? Okay, it was first a 26% increase, I guess it's not in the minutes, but it was a 26% increase, and the board felt that we should come down and ask everybody to come in on their numbers.
Okay, well.
So, but if you want to now say that with, with 20 to 30% down, okay?
Go back to the-
And then you go to your other, that you want to raise it to 705,000 from 701. It's just your guess. So really, we're gonna argue over $5,000, $4,000?
No, no, well, one, one more down, yeah. The, the whole point there is, we're trying to make an estimate what the revenue shortfall is, Jim.
But we did make an estimate during budget process.
And so, right now, okay, I made an estimate of revenue shortfall of $211,000. If you, if you put that 63 in, it says the revenue shortfall would be $274,000.
Right.
Okay, so I'm estimating that there's a revenue shortfall.
Right, but if you put the $145,000 in, and then you put in the $210,000 in, and this is Bill's estimate, and I will stick to $643,000. Go ahead, move on, Bill.
Cool. So you're saying that by your estimate-
But there's a revenue shortfall.
There's gonna, likely a revenue shortfall.
Likely a revenue shortfall. Right, by my estimate. Okay, and yeah, we need to, we need to put procedures to track the revenue coming in, okay, because we have to keep looking at that, so we don't overspend our budget.
You get a monthly report that we don't have today that was supposed to be, I guess.
Right. Okay, do you want me to go to the next page?
Okay, yeah, go to the next page.
Is it the-
Okay, and, and Jim, this is a typo. It's the FY24 shortfall. Okay?
This is a typo for everyone online?
Yeah, okay, that was, it was a shortfall reimbursement of $375,000 assigned to the managing municipality category. Okay, I mean, my opinion, and I think the new treasurer coming in and the auditors, or, well, yeah, the new financial director and the, and the auditor really need to think about this. I think that probably should be broken out as a separate line item, just like carry forward income is on the revenue line, because how will a treasurer track that that's getting repaid? Okay, that, that's-
It's paid by collecting taxes. And then if this year we fall short, then in two years from now, we will be dealing with the shortfall, while we were dealing with the positive. That's the way municipal government works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, changes in finance, there was a net savings out of that, mostly elimination of the staff accountant and bringing payroll service back in-house.
So this is your suggestion?
No, that was based on talking with Dave. That's what Dave, that's what Dave wanted to do.
Okay, so the voters voted to have a system in place, because we have a TIF district, and you yourself came in, you yourself came into board meetings, and some of the questions were, how is this town not going to be like Burlington or South Burlington? And we clearly came out and said, we're going to beef up the finance department. So now you want to strip it down, you and Dave, bring it to the board for a suggestion.
Okay, then, of course, there were changes to the town planning zoning administrator. There was a net reduction in the expenses for that.
I think that's wrong.
Okay.
No, your, your figure's wrong. I, I know definitely, like, removing, forget about me, but not having a full-time zoning administrator here, you guys are out of your minds. But your calculation, what page is it for zoning for your expenses?
It's, it's in there quite a way because of the way the budget is put together. I didn't change any of the line edits.
So you have down zoning administrator on line number 242, $40,000. First of all, the zoning administrator for the full month of July was paid the full, no, was paid for 40 hours a week. So there's 160, 170 hours. The rate is $32.48. But even if I take $32.48, even underneath the part-time position, and I times it by 25 hours, that's $812 a week, and I times that by 52 weeks, it's $42,224 plus the full, plus the full time for the month of July, which is not $40,000.
So it's 42-
No, no, it's not. It's more than that.
No, excuse me, it's 42-
No, 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 it's more than 42,24.
I'm trying to get the numbers from you, Jim. Just let me ask my question. So it's 40, you said it was 42.5K plus July?
No, I said it was 42,224.
42,224 plus July.
But you're the one doing all the assumptions here. I'm just trying to point out that you're off by about $5,000.
I'm just trying to write down with the numbers.
Figure it out.
So we're off by about $5,000?
Probably.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. New information's good. That's why we're having this meeting.
I don't know, you've kind of been beating me up on all the other new information I'm giving you.
Okay. Repairs, operating supplies, electricity, propane, were, were all adjusted for-
With that table?
Well, yeah, and, and what was interesting, and I, it's just the nature of doing budgets, okay, but there was definitely randomness in all of those budget line items. Okay, some, some departments would be doing like $2,000 a year, and they'd put in $6,000. Other departments would put in $6,000 a year, and they're only spending $2,000. So there was some randomness in there, so I, I tried to like-
Normalize.
Normalize that. Okay, okay, to, and take into account inflation based upon, you know, historical spending trends. Okay. Road maintenance, okay, again, this was working with Dave, okay, it looked like the materials, okay, were adjusted way down. Okay, in terms of the budget. Okay, so Dave, Dave thought we needed to put more money back into the materials, and I believe the total value of that was around $60,000.
I believe we put the materials out for a bid, so.
Just, that's just the wind of sand.
Well, no, there's other items that we have a bid number, or it's a, it's a flat rate.
So I think he's saying that that, that amount may be low.
Right.
So there may be future need to-
Yeah, based upon looking, based upon looking at historical spending, too. The amount seems very low.
And Ricky's brought that up in the past, that he was surprised by that.
And again, so the-
I was surprised that you would lower the salt budget when you went over by $35,000 this year. Makes no sense, and you're getting about another half mile of road that's four lanes wide.
And so they accounted for it.
You're going to use a significant amount of extra salt on that. It makes, doesn't make sense, but that's, wasn't my decision.
So that's why, that's why we, okay, okay, because it, again, it just looked like it was low in the budget. Okay. The public works director, we already had a conversation about, okay, that work-
But it's not negative 90, because you now just took on whatever, keep going.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's July.
No, 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 there's not July. There's July, August, but-
Yeah.
But you hired on a water person that's not in the budget. Keep going. There's no savings.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the total, the total change was about minus 78K, which Jim thinks is actually 0K. So that just says we have a $271,000 revenue shortfall.
Okay.
No, 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 Jim says on the $145,000 coming in is revenue, the $210,000 is revenue, and that you're wrong on the 97,000, and you're wrong on 5,000. So there's probably 275, 145, 37, 210, 145 is like 355, 365, so-
Are you saying we have a surplus?
Yeah, you should have a surplus.
Okay.
If you receive every single tax dollar, which you're not going to, but you will get delinquent taxes coming in, and that's the way it works, but keep going.
You're just arguing we wouldn't get delinquent taxes, but that's okay.
No, I said we would.
On the budget, okay, so on the budget summary-
I said we would receive about $600,000 a year.
Yeah, the budget summary, the, the-
Yeah, correct.
The thing at the bottom, the thing at the bottom, okay, you can, the exact numbers are, okay, I believe that the revenue expense forecasts are both gonna come in below the original budget, which is actually, you know, other than, you know, the expense forecast come in potentially below the original budget's a good thing, but that, whether or not it happens remains to be seen. However, the revenue forecast looked like it was declining faster than the expense forecast.
So we budgeted $7,765,875. And you're saying we're only gonna get $7,554,375. Right?
Yeah. And that's based on historical and statistical analysis.
The past board that I sat on, underneath Bill's whatever, is 2.73% off.
Yeah, there's, exactly, so, yeah, that's all right.
You're one, so this is what a budget is.
It's a, yeah.
And it's probably gonna come in better, because there's money coming in from FEMA.
I hope so. I hope it comes in better.
No, you guys are just sitting, you're just sitting here, Bill, and you keep on saying, the board, the board, the board, and that's what you're going through, and that's what you're looking here. You want to be a savior. It's a budget. And if a budget falls within 5% up or down, you're fine. Okay? So 2.7% there. Just, just keep moving on.
What we're trying to do-
No, what you're trying to do is rip apart what a full department head of a whole town put to budget with a manager and others.
And Jim, as I said at the beginning, you have a new town manager, you have four new selectmen, okay, who didn't participate in any of this. We need to have a process to look at the budget, to understand it, so that we can review it every month and manage it.
The way that you're presenting this is making it sense that you want to change it to these numbers?
No, the budget is not changeable from what the voters voted for.
Right.
No, you're looking to make changes to the line items that the, that the voters voted on.
The voters, we've already had that discussion in past meetings. The voters vote on the total amount. They don't vote on the individual line items.
No, you're wrong, but keep going.
We voted on line items. All right, well, again, we can agree to disagree on that, because we've had this discussion on that.
Okay, so, and then, you know, the rest of the document, okay, which hopefully Lyndon will put online, is just, is just the, the budget. Okay, this is some questions and anomalies. We've already talked through all of these.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, we don't need to, we've already talked, the rest of it is page upon page upon page. Okay?
You can see the word, work with.
And then, and then I annotated every line, I annotated all the changes, so people can see, okay, where the changes were made. Okay, I also added on FY2023 and 2024 columns, so that people can actually see. I did a whole bunch of calculations on the grand list, so people can see where that number's coming from. Okay, calculations on the local options tax, so people can see where that's coming from. Okay, so.
All right. So when people vote on a budget, and they go to their Killington Communities Annual Report, like page 35 for FY26, there is budgeted for 2024, the actual for 2024, and the budget for 2025 with the budget for 2026, you know, I think it's already done there enough. But like, I'd like to get to your expenses, and I would like to go to line item number 147.
Okay.
Since we're here to save money, right? That's what we're looking to do. 147.
The town manager salary.
Town manager's salary, $150,000.
That was what's budgeted, that's not the actual amount.
That's what's budgeted, but I, I'd like to know what the town manager is getting paid per week, because I would like to, to bring up that everyone thought I was crazy sitting here reading the full contract for the town manager. Okay, so the full contract, I'm just gonna go to salary benefits.
Is this an executive session?
No, it's not, no, because this was already read out.
You can read the contract out.
I read the contract straight out, and that's what, if you were listening to me, I said I read it out, and I thought, everybody thought I was weird for reading it. The select board will pay Atherton a salary of $140,000 for the period of March 25, 2025 through June 30, 2026. So that's 15 months in my mind, so 140 divided by 15 brings you to like $2100, $2100 a week or whatever. So really, that line item is, let's see, 140 divided by 66 weeks is 2121 times 52. So that line item should be $110,303.3. And Dave did sign the contract. So he is getting paid from July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2026, a total salary of $110,303.3. This is not an assumption, this is a signed contract.
Okay, but also, Jim, also, Jim, you said prior, okay, that the select board voted on this budget and approved it. So the select board put in $150,000 as the salary for the town manager.
So which way do you want to go, Bill? Which, that's your choice. Do you want to go to the, do you want to go to there?
No, 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 I want to go to-
But it states, but the policy-
Excuse me.
No, he's gonna say, is it 150 or whatever?
No, no, I want to go to the right answer, whatever it is, okay? I only, in, in putting this report together, I, oh, I don't know anything about-
I'm just trying to help you save money. I just saved $38,000.
Well, that's good.
I saved $38,000.
That's good, okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
But I, I, but in putting this re-
15.
Yeah, why did it get to 150,000 if that was the case?
That was the contract that was written up, because he was being hired on starting March 25.
You get Google that are trying to get into that.
It was Googled, March 25. Okay, Google, that's the information that I was, sorry, folks. But the, I don't really care. This is what a contract.
Yeah.
I know there was issues with nobody ever seeing Abby's contract that gave her the vacation time and the Friday or whatever, which I had to stick up for that or whatever, because there was. So all I'm saying now is, is that salary benefits-
Okay, we need to review that.
You need to, no, he needs to be getting paid $2121 or whatever a week, and if we've been paying him $150 or $140, starting in July, he needs, we need to claw back, just like we did with the fire chief when he got overpaid. Okay? That's all.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's a contract, and he signed it.
If we, if we messed up, then we did it, yeah.
He signed it.
Yeah.
And it also says, it also goes on to say that, um-
We have to do a review, I know that, that's, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna discuss that here.
I'm not gonna get into a review.
Well, no, I was just reminding everyone that I think in-
A review with everybody leaving is pretty cool.
In the, in the contract, at six months, we're supposed to do a review.
In the exercise of this discretion, the, the select board may adjust the town manager's salary effective July 1, 2026. So his salary is set.
I was looking at-
I'll read the whole thing for this. The select board will pay Atherton a salary of $140,000 for the period of March 25, 2025 through June 30, 2026. I count that as 66 weeks. Okay? Salary shall be paid on a bi-weekly basis. In the exercise of its discretion, the select board may adjust the town manager's salary effective July 1, 2026. Not any time before.
Right.
And on July 1 of each fiscal year thereafter.
Okay.
Okay.
So you just saved $38,000.
Thank you. Cool. All right. Jim, any other things you want to point out or questions on here? No? All right. All right. Any questions from, well, first, from us, questions to Bill? Thank you for doing that, Bill.
Yeah, I think, and I think, you know, as a group, okay, we're gonna have to have a conversation about how we're going to track the monthly budgets.
Yeah.
How we're going to adjust our forecast. Okay, so we should be trying to forecast how much revenue we're gonna get in and what our expenses are going to be, so that as we're going through the year, okay, we're trying to continuously narrow, okay, the points. narrow, okay, the points, so that we don't go way over budget.
Yeah.
Okay, and so this is just part of that education process to try to figure out, okay, where we are. And actually, when, Jim is correct, when you look at the budget, okay, if, if, if I can do a historical analysis and come out one percent, that's.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great, and that was the whole point of just trying to figure out where we were.
Listen, there's been people looking to, I'm sorry for you, Bill, like, I know you're trying to do whatever, but there are people that are trying to say this is a tip and you don't understand the tip, and, you know, I, I've got Lucretia Wanzar saying we can't use the money from the swimming pool because it's in a restricted fund. Well, I don't know, I guess if you're gonna take the theory that we're not doing a line item budget, that we never voted any highway funds, we never voted for any restricted funds or reserve funds, but if you go back to when the swimming pool was set up, I think it was eighteen or nineteen or whatever, it said, it said, "reserve fund," it didn't say "a restricted fund." So I'm tired of people saying things just to spit it out and it's not really true, okay? So in two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twenty-three, the twenty-four budget that has a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall, I don't know if you all were around for July thirteenth or July seventeenth, but the budget goes from July one of twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. We had over seven million dollars worth of damage up on East Mountain Road and we spent money and we just started getting it back in mid twenty-four, twenty-five, okay? So for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars short in that year, that's really good.
That's good.
Okay, and I don't know what twenty twenty-five is going to be, okay? Until the audit is done.
My, my only comment on any of this stuff, Jim, and it's not, it is not about how people did it in the past, but as a group here, we need to be very careful with our language, that we're using our language correctly, so restricted funds or.
There are no restricted funds.
No, well, excuse me, we, whatever, whatever we call something, we have to be very careful with our language, that we're using it in a proper fashion. And I also think, okay, we need to be annoting the budget for our public record, so that when we make a decision on something, there's a record of it, okay, that's associated with the budget, okay? And, you know, because this, this document is a living document and ultimately this document gets published in the town report, and the anno, the annotations associated with the line items should go in the town report as well.
Right, so people can understand.
So people understand, okay, that's the whole point of going through this, because there's, there's paperwork upon paperwork upon paperwork, and then there's memory and then there's computer records and.
But, but, it's like, you say, here's page thirty-four, it says road expenses.
Yes.
And it says twenty twenty-four and it tells you, and then it says what the actual was.
Yes.
And then if I go to, to these other things, but you're saying it should be, here's solid waste, here's the library, and it has the twenty-four, the twenty-five, and what's going for twenty-six.
Right.
But if there's.
So it's there.
But if there's unusual.
What more do you need?
If there's unusual expenses, okay?
A dramatic increase.
If there's a dramatic increase, okay, if all of a sudden you decide, okay, you wanna bring on an extra person, so historically there's a jump in the budget, all those things should be annotated so that you know about it going on in the future.
Because we don't always have that carry-forward history.
You don't have that carry-forward history, you know, like, like the, the decrease in chemicals, okay, for the road.
We don't know why.
We don't know why, okay, and, and it's a, it's a, it, it's a simple thing to write it down as part of the budget, to do it as an annotation, okay, saying, hey, we decreased the budget because we felt, you know, inventories of the town were already sufficiently high enough, we didn't need to buy more.
So something that says like in the minutes, right? Is that what you're asking for?
I mean, in a consolidated place.
In a consolidated place, okay?
But should it take the minutes and put it into a consolidated place?
No, no, there's a budget, that's a consolidate, there's a consolidated budget that does get published.
No, I'm saying anything that's in the minutes of a budget discussion.
Right, but as I said, some of it wasn't in the minutes that we're able to find.
Yeah, some of it wasn't in the minutes.
So if we have it in a clear place for the public.
I don't know where you're looking, but I mean.
It's, it's just for the public, so they don't have to dig around.
How many people here in the public knew that seven hundred thousand dollars was the actual purchase price, it was all over the place, you even had the resort standing up there with the Happy Gilmore check saying, "We're gonna give you the seven hundred thousand dollars."
Yeah.
And then you come out with six hundred and seventy-nine, and then you have a town manager, no, but you had a town manager that never budgeted for legal or closing.
We're just trying to make it more clear, this is a suggestion to make it more clear.
Well, I think it would've been nice if you moved it more clear in the next budget, instead of picking on.
That's what he's.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
No, no, because you're going, you could've said, listen, going for, you're demonstrating by putting down town employees that put a budget together.
No, I'm not putting down anybody, I'm not putting down anybody.
None of this is personal, this is just, it's a view of the numbers.
You could say it's not personal to you, it is personal to me, okay?
Well, but it's not meant to be.
Sorry that you took it that way.
Yeah, I'm sorry you took it that way, it is not personal from that standpoint.
Especially when I start saying things that go against your assumptions.
Well, you're saying things before.
That you say, that's coming out of your.
Jim, the, the problem that occurred there was you were saying things before I even said word one, okay, so you, you, I mean, so.
The conversation from George went to, okay? So I have issues, let's just keep on moving with them.
Yeah, okay, we noted some of them.
And you have issues too, so we all have issues.
We all got some issues. All right, can we, uh, thank you. Um, can we, I wanna open up, does anyone have questions in the room, then I'll go online? Uh, and we're not making any motions, we're not doing any things, but if there's one or two, just point of clarifications, I'm fine.
We've got chat for three.
I'm gonna, oh, thank you. These may just be comments.
I don't know what they are.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop sharing this screen for right now so I can.
Oh, why not?
I'm sorry, hold on, I will go back to that.
See, that's like ridiculous right there, that comment there, because you folks have not been in any executive sessions for whatever, you're saying here that there's a lot of mistakes here, you have no idea what went on, but you have one person up here saying bribery and everything else, and that's gotta stop because Andrew Geeter does not know what he's talking about. You folks listened to Andrew Geeter at the last meeting, talking about a Markowski bid, he doesn't understand that there was engineering and other work done before. Andrew Geeter is wrong.
Okay.
No, Jim, I'm gonna make a motion, do you folks agree that Andrew Geeter is wrong?
Jim, you're.
I'm making a motion.
Andrew, please, please reach yourself right now.
I would like to put it on the next meeting to, to, to clarify how, no, I'm asking you as the chair, to clarify how the budget came up and that Markowski bid two point something million dollars or whatever, and there was engineering work done before, and there was also.
What, what do you want on the budget? This is, like, what, what do you want, no, sorry, not on the budget, on the.
No, I went to here, and this is ridiculous, for putting somebody's name into a town thing that is not, and we all know who Chat H is, for bribe hush money, no, it's not.
Okay.
That's attacking previous town managers and boards.
All right.
What happened to the money from the heights? We bought it for six hundred and thirty-one thousand, we didn't buy it, no, I'm making a comment, we did not buy it for six hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Right now, we're trying to close out this budget review and you ask what was on there.
Cobblestone disaster will cost us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm here with Rob in the.
Jim.
No, no, stop.
It's our meeting, don't worry about this, we can address this, but it's our meeting, okay?
No, you guys have been listening to this ass for a year and a half.
Let's not call the public an ass.
No, I'm not calling the public, I'm calling Andrew Geeter.
Yeah, who's part of the public, so let's not do that.
Yeah, well, he's also one against me, so whatever, and you lost, Andrew.
Okay, but right now, we have questions.
At the beginning, at the beginning of this comment from Andrew, okay? Jim said we were calling out mistakes people made.
Sure.
Nobody made a mistake in putting together the budget, there's a lot of people who work very hard to put the budget together, okay? They were working at the time with assumptions that at that time were valid to them, okay? And so, please, everyone in town, keep working, okay, keep trying to refine your ability to collect revenue, please, keep trying to find ways, okay, to manage your expenses, that's what we need as a town, so we can stay financially solvent.
Well, they're getting.
But the assumptions are gonna keep changing, okay, because the world doesn't stay still, okay? And as a group here, we're gonna have to manage our way through those changes in real time, okay? And the only way we can do that is if we understand the, how the budget was put together.
Very well said. Is there any questions? Okay, any questions in the room? George?
You keep saying there's a giant budget that we're voting on, and we're not line item, but I look at this book and that's how I vote, okay?
Okay.
And you guys should realize that, when you change that, you're going against my vote. We, we had a full-time zoning person, it was in the book, do you understand? Then you decide, I'll just cut that out, without having a vote, without anyone saying it. So I vote off this, so you're saying, no, it's one giant budget, but Bill's going line item, by line item, by line item, because it is line items, that's what we vote on. So you're talking both ways.
We talked about this in the past.
I won't say yes, but.
But, so I'll just let that one be. Anyone else?
But you have to make a decision, are we line item this, or are we going off a giant budget?
Well, I think, George, to put together the giant budget, the town departments need to develop their budgets on a line item, and that's what they're trying to do, okay? But the, the voters are actually voting for the seven million dollars.
No, they're voting for the.
Yeah, but you wanna know where the seven million dollars is going?
It's going to the line items.
Okay, so we're moving on to the signed warrants, the one payroll that everyone feels comfortable.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants for the, um, weekly, the weekly payroll.
It's a weekly payroll.
Yep. Can I get a second on that?
Which includes rec, highway, and certain others.
Second.
Second, all right, um, I'll pass this around, if anyone, well, we looked at, does anyone else need to look at this as before? Okay, so all in favor of signing this warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, and I'll pass it around to sign. All right, that is the only warrant that we're gonna sign, uh, the other ones, we will either push till next time if we can, or, uh, put out a special select board, so for anyone that is interested, keep an eye on the town calendar for a special select board meeting.
Sorry.
We have to give, I think, seventy-two hours.
He has a ten-hour.
Is, is.
I wasn't listening.
Sorry, special select board meetings is seventy-two hours?
No, it's twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours?
Emergency is automatic.
Regular, seventy-two?
Regular is forty-eight.
Oh, I don't know where I got seventy-two, don't listen to that. But we'll have to give a day's notice, so if you are interested in the signing of these other ones, keep an eye on the calendar, we'll try and get them, um, hopefully this week. Thank you for that. Come to the second round of citizens' comments and concerns.
I thought you just picked that.
No, that was, that was specifically on the revenue, or not the revenue, the budget review. I'm gonna start online this time, uh, does anyone online have questions or concerns that were not covered in the meeting today? Seeing none? Thank you, I'm gonna go to the room, anyone in the room? Yes, go ahead.
Jan Rich.
I'll, I'll come back in.
Jan Rich, Killington, two meetings ago, there was quite a discussion about the zoning administrator, a lot of us were really upset about that, what happened?
Currently, that position is part-time.
So that decision was made?
That was, that was what was voted, if there wants to be more discussion or more review of it.
Really screwed up on that one.
Let's not go there. You made a vote to allow a town manager to make a decision, so they made a.
They made two decisions, there were two decisions that were made.
Um, so there was a vote for recommendation of putting it down to part-time, which was passed by this board.
A recommendation?
Yep.
Really screwed up on that one.
Which was followed by, uh, town manager.
You really screwed up.
Okay, anything else in here? Ken, you had a question, or Lucretia?
Yeah, Patrick, thanks for recommending. I would just like to, David, you do your job in putting that snapshot together, debate on the budget, um, the zoom house, which they can't have voted on, uh, you know, the five, the member board, debate, and we have a new chair of that board, and we also, members of it, paying, uh, hires, the new town manager, and I have partners for those, and we will assume the influence of projects, and, so again, okay, thank you for carrying the stone and the nut to the minister, and, uh, watching the money, that's all, so things, that the budget that takes is based on, and we need a thorough understanding, having lots of quarter, that preparation of the budget, that takes two long quarters, two, uh, multiple decades, and, so I think, you know, the budget that we showed on, and, so, nice job, Bill, nice job, David, and others, for the help we've had.
All right, thank you for your comment, Ken. All right, I believe that ends, I don't see anyone else, so, and citizen comment, concerns, move to select board comment and concerns, anyone?
I'm good.
You're good? Jim?
He wants to talk, Jay.
Jay, do you have anything?
I'm good.
You're good? Bill, you good? Good? I have nothing.
Um, um, this board, last two meetings I've listened to online, we just did a whole presentation on budgets.
Okay.
I know this, um, citizens are finding out that the, um, contributions are three percent, I don't know why there wasn't any talk about that, because the board, or the public has been asking, why aren't you going to eighty-twenty, and then paying the premium of, of the deductible? There's no mention of that, of saving money, it's health insurance, and you folks have, you've even on, on recording, we're gonna look at that, and yes, it is, the twenty percent, and that's what's standard out there. So when I have employees coming to me, and I'm allowed as a select board member to talk to anyone, just like Dave can talk to anyone, or if an employee comes up to me and says, "Hey, Jim, how come everybody's quitting?" Like, I don't know, that's my response, I don't know.
Okay.
And then it's like, well, what else is going on? And I said, you know, my hours just got down, cut down to twenty-five hours a week, two days' notice of no health benefits starting July twenty-eighth, okay? So the end of the month, no health benefits. That's all I said, but I get an email that you're CC'd on, "Jim, I was just informed that you have told employees they were going to require them to pay twenty percent of their health insurance premium. This is far from the truth and this needs to stop immediately. As you know, a select board member has no authority to make any decisions for the town unless there's a warning meeting and a quorum." Kind of find that funny, because we just listened to two hours of presentations that was never approved for us as a quorum, to go forward, but also as the zoning administrator, you have zero authority to make these decisions. I, I don't know what this email is even talking about, I've listened to videos.
I don't know either.
And you guys are saying up to twenty percent? I think George has brought it up, and a couple of other people have brought it up.
Okay.
And I believe that this board, in a recording, stated that it would be looked at. So.
Sure.
I don't know why a town manager then is telling employees that this board is not looking at the health benefits.
It should be noted, Jim, that in the presentation that I give, I gave, okay, there were no comments at all on employee wages or employee benefits.
Not today.
There were no comments at all in the presentation I gave today on employee wages or employee benefits. And I can also tell you that in my discussion with Dave, there was never a discussion of health benefits.
So you're telling the public that when they were here for the July.
No, no, I'm telling you, I'm telling you for putting, I'm telling you. Excuse me, I'm telling you for putting together this presentation, which you questioned at the beginning of your comments there, okay? We never looked at wages, and we never looked at health benefits, and in my conversations with Dave on the budget, the subject of health benefits never came up.
I wish you would open your ears, Bill, when I speak. I said, right now, that this whole presentation, but yet, and the July fourteenth and the July twenty-eighth board meetings that are recorded, that this board spoke openly with the public about raising the premiums up to twenty percent. So why, when someone comes to me, and all I say is, I don't know what's going on, but the last two board meetings I'm not at, there's conversation of raising the employee's premium up to twenty percent and taking away the total deductible.
I would like to comment on that.
But yet, why do I get an email kind of threatening me that I shouldn't be saying this? Did this conversation take place, or am I getting the wrong videos?
I don't know what the email specifically is about. We did talk about in the la, I think it was the last meeting, or the one before that?
We talked about two meetings.
Yeah, we mentioned it, we talked about it, and that is something that, right. And that's something that's going to be coming up in the next budget.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, we are going to take a look at it.
I don't have to give you a copy because you were CC'd.
Yeah, specifically, I don't know.
So when you think someone says.
When you're talking budgets, you're saying for the next fiscal year.
I'm talking for the next fiscal year, yes, because I don't believe we could change it now.
Well, you're wrong on that, you can't. If you look at the policy, it says at any given time.
There's no intention of doing that.
No, it's just to screw me over, but thank you.
Okay. Any, any other comment with that?
I mean, guys, really, why don't you just man up and say you don't like me, and you're screwing me over, that's all? Just say it, just say it, because it is true. And we're going to get Ricky over here crying because back in two thousand and thirteen, we made you go from zero percent to three percent.
Jim, do you have any?
That was the last time.
You want to talk about contracts and stuff?
Ricky, Ricky, please. Do you have any more comments?
No, I don't, I'm done. I'm done. I just would like to know why I get these emails.
I have no idea.
I got one for the listers. When, when Bill and I spoke up about the listers and saying, all I said was, is that the reason why our school tax rate was up in the three-dollar range was, is because they didn't get the reappraisal done on time. Do we agree they did not get the reappraisal done on time?
And I think that that statement.
Email, you and me and someone else, telling us, from the town manager, that we should not be saying.
I do think that that statement is a little misleading, because, yes, since the assessment is not done, the rates are higher. However, the CLA, if the, once it's reassessed, and this is, again, I learned it from you, learned a lot from you, is when it's reassessed, your assessed value should go up, but your CLA should go down, so the net return should be zero. And so I think that sentiment was, it appeared, or it could be interpreted, that the raise in taxes was due to the listers, when really, it's, the assessment would be offset in the CLA.
If I go and find that email, it said that the tax rate, it wasn't the tax bill, it was the tax rate.
Then it may have been.
You received the email too.
Yeah, I didn't read it too much, but I read it, but I don't know.
From the town manager, what he writes to us?
I don't remember it.
Oh.
You can pull if you want, but I don't think that, I think that was the sentiment.
Blaming the listers on the tax rate. No one blamed.
Right.
No one blamed. Bill and I were getting into a conversation about how the rate was up at that rate.
Right, but really, the elevated.
Was, is that, all I said was, is that if the listers.
The rate would be lower if the listers had done the assessment.
It would be about a dollar forty-five.
But the total tax amount, that, that's what I'm saying, the total tax amount would not be different, and that's really comes down to the state and the school. It could be, depending on where you live.
Everybody's different, it could be a condominium's higher. But why, when we say how prices are changing, but why, where does a town manager get off sending, almost like, sending email, like, stop it now?
I think that we have, us as a board, what we say sometimes matters a bit more than if we were just any other person in the public. And so I think it's more of a sentiment of, can you be careful of what you say to not have something come across wrong, say? Because your words, just like our words here, your words has a lot of weight to tax, to the, it does.
You guys, I was not at the July fourteenth meeting, I was not at the July twenty-eighth meeting. I listened to them because, one, I was out that one day, and the next one, at the hospital, and the next one, I had to go somewhere, okay?
Responsible thing to do.
So, so, so I listened to the video, and this is specifically what you said. You're talking to taxpayers, right?
Yeah.
And, and you're telling them what's going on in the meeting, so I caught up on the meeting. And I have somebody coming over to me.
We are going to talk about it.
They're looking into raising it up to twenty percent.
So that may have been, that email, it may have been miscommunicated of what was said, so.
Whatever.
And if you'd like to talk to Dave, I'll talk to Dave if that's the case.
I haven't talked to Dave since May fifth, okay? Other than coming to board meetings. No, no, because he won't come and see me because he's a chicken. Can we adjourn the meeting?
No, I want to say one thing, as far, I got one thing I want to say.
You can have the floor then.
When you make the address that this board approved, said that they'd look into the twenty percent, I did not say that. You should say, members of this board, not this board, because I had never said any such thing.
I did, I did say, I didn't give a number then.
What's that?
You're totally against it.
Twenty percent? I would have to look at it, I don't, I don't feel that.
Once again, it's just another person that doesn't listen to what I said. I said that during the meeting, that this board had discussions. No, I didn't say you approved it, I said this board had discussions.
He was making a clarification.
No, he was trying to correct me when he's wrong again.
Okay, well, he was making a clarification.
Did I not say this board had comments?
You are relentless, man.
Jim, do you have?
I'm here with a freaking axe to grind.
Do you have more?
No, you have the axe to grind.
Jim, do you have more comments and concerns? Ricky, do you have more comments and concerns? Thank you. Bill, do you have any comments and concerns?
No, I'm fine.
Jay?